Like to call to order the Wednesday, February 11, 2015, meeting of the Southborough Old School Committee. First quarter of business is audience sharing. Anyone? All right, then. We'll move on to new business, legislative update. Christina, I know you had a few words about the NICE cuts.
I did. We just recently received a very detailed summary of the NICE cuts that were recently enacted by the governor and in fact covered every aspect of the legislature's authority over budget in the Commonwealth. And we did receive a summary of the cuts, not proposed cuts, they've actually been made at this point. And we're all waiting to see what's going to come next, given the revenue shortfall or the deficit in Massachusetts and the fact that Governor Baker is really just taking off hold of his office. Certainly a wonderful opportunity for him to do that during the snowstorm. Every new administrator's must-
And we have added any snow removal budget.
That's right. And so the summary has gone out to our districts and most of the cuts at this point are really made in grants that we are not now participating in, as well as other aspects of the Department of Ed's, different departments that they sponsor. And so many of the cuts were also made at the state level. And in terms of the impact on Southborough right now, there has been a slight reduction in the kindergarten grant at this point. It's down about 20 percent, which Cheryl I think is around $10,000. We're hopeful that that will get replenished this year when the budget landscape changes a little bit. But at this point, that's been the most significant impact with all the NICE cuts that have been presented and there have been numerous cuts and reductions. So we're keeping a watchful eye. I did hear Governor Baker, unfortunately through, there was an occasion to watch the news and the weather of late. One of his comments, when asked about school closings and snow and MDTA and all of that, was that he needed the time to go work on his budget, that he still had three weeks, which means he's going to come very close to the date that he has to submit his budget, which is March 4. So I know tonight we'll be talking about the recommended budget, but all the municipalities and certainly our town administrators are watching and waiting for that information to be released. So we'll all have to stay tuned with what those final numbers look like. And we're hopeful that this is the first and last NICE cut of this year.
All right. Speaking of the new administration of Patty Cress, our colleague in Northborough and the regional school community, had occasion to meet Lieutenant Colito.
Yes.
Was that at Conquinn?
She actually was involved in swearing in of District Attorney Joe Early. Mr. Early is Attorney, District Attorney Early is a friend of both Southborough and Northborough. And he chose one of our schools to have the swearing in ceremony. And Lieutenant Karen Colito was present and actually conducted the swearing in ceremony. So it was quite a wonderful opportunity to meet her, as well as to observe such a memorable event. It was most delightful that his mom, who's about, she's there. She was present when her husband was, took off the oath of office and so it was delightful to see her at the ceremony as well. And we did have a really great conversation with her and talked about the trip that we make to the Hill every year. And usually we meet with the representatives and the, you know, Carolyn Dykner and Jamie Eldredge. And she offered an opportunity to get together and for us to visit with her when we visit in April.
Right. And apparently Patty's trying to arrange, I guess, a phone call, whether she was trying to get her to come to the school again, but she seemed receptive to doing that, so we thought we'd get the legislative subcommittee together and have a meeting and get on the phone.
So I think the hope is that we can have a conference call-
Right.
-in central office. So Patty Cress has given me some numbers to contact and I'll be working through Karen Colito's office staff to arrange that conference call. So it'll be pretty interesting. She's quite engaging and very much invested in education and the communities, particularly being from Shrewsbury herself.
Correct.
So she's very, very familiar with our area. It was pretty neat.
The only other thing I have is the Foundation Budget Review Commission that was supposed to be January 4th, that got postponed. New date is Saturday, February 28th, at the Florence Sawyer School in Belton.
Turn on email about the shootout or anything. Because I forget by the time we get home.
I can tell you.
Okay, that'd be great. When is it, Saturday or March?
February 21st.
February 21st.
From 11 to 1.
Hopefully it will not be rescheduled.
Yeah.
So that's where they're presenting sort of what this committee, or getting ideas at.
I think it's an opportunity for people to give feedback, suggestions, concerns, that kind of thing.
Great.
That's all I get. I think that brings us to the Finn and Woodward School Improvement Plan update.
Very good. As you know, our schools have a two-year cycle for our school improvement plans. Every other year we provide you with a more extensive presentation of the new plans and the opposite year we have a brief update. So that's what I have provided you in your packets. You all have a copy of that. So, when we begin, I'll talk a little bit about our goals. We have five priorities under which we write our goals. And the first two that I'll highlight for you are academic excellence and the high-performing workforce. These two go hand in hand in regards to goals around improving student achievement. In academic excellence, we look at pre-areas of particular plan, literacy, science, and math. In literacy, we're continuing to implement the Daily Five and Cafe reading approaches. And we've added a new component, which our second grade teachers are piloting, which is an online data collection tool. As you know, as teachers conference with children and keep track of their reading, they usually keep notes. And so we've found a product that we think is a really helpful tool to be able to put all that information online. From that information, they, helps them to drive instruction and to form small group support groups. All of the teachers in kindergarten through grade three this year have a new reading assessment called BASS, which is Benchmark Reading Assessment. It's given three times a year and this assessment is what we use to measure students' progress over time. The district is also in the process of updating our curriculum in teaching of writing. All of our teachers have gone to a training called SRSD. It's been, you've probably heard before, it's the Self-Regulated Strategy Development. Been in the process over the last couple of years of getting our teachers trained and now all of our teachers came through three and actually have been trained in that particular approach to teaching writing. We also had some consultants that are working with our district who came in and observed a lot of our classrooms and kind of did a need survey and looked at some professional development they can also provide us in writing as we adopt the new Lucy Colkins Writing Program. So they are working with us this spring, kind of opening up the materials, getting familiar with them so that we can do implementation next year. In science, we're still waiting for the Department of Education who will be releasing the next generation science standards. Expect that they will be coming out in 2016, '17. We have a science committee that meets regularly. The standards could be quite different than what we've seen in the past, so they have really done a great job of meeting on a regular basis so that when those new standards are released, we're ready to roll. I think it will bring with it a lot of opportunity for really new ways of looking at how we teach science through technology and math, and I think we're really excited about that.
But we have some idea of what we think they'll be?
We do. We do. We have some idea of what we think they're going to be and we, the grade levels have been talking about, because sometimes they release things in bands, so we don't know which grade is going to teach what. So they've been meeting to talk about what each grade will be teaching and start to have the discussion of what kind of resources we'll be going forward. In math, this is the second year we're unrolling our new Envisions math program. We've now fully implemented all the technology components. And one particular component that we've been using this year is an opportunity for parents to access video clips of what has been taught during the school day. So it's very helpful for parents who are seeing the new math, whose strategies and language may be very different from when they were taught, so they can go on, watch this video clip. It explains those strategies and the languages being used. It's also really helpful for students who are absent. So if a student is absent, they can email the teacher, the teacher can say, "We're doing lesson, you know, 7.3." They can go on, look at the video clip, so the student, when he returns to school, is not behind them. So it's really a great component. Our kindergarten teachers have been working hard this year and they've completed, not that they don't work hard every year-
Right.
...but really hard this year with the new MKIA, not to be confused with IQ. Massachusetts Entry Assessment, Massachusetts Kindergarten Entry Assessment. And it's an assessment used for all kindergarten students. It's given twice a year, in November and in June. It assesses students in 10 different standards and 40 different indicators, so it's really quite cumbersome. So I really applaud the teachers here in Southborough. They dug in, they worked really well as a group. They could have spent a lot of time whining and they didn't, because it's really, it's very time consuming. But I, again, commend them on the great job that they've done. Greg Martino has been really good about coordinating so that we can work with the Northborough kindergarten teachers, so we've kind of all been in this together. In our area of safe and healthy learning environment in our plan-
Question on the last one, Jim.
Sure.
I note that there's a disproportionate assessment between this year and next year of these standards. If this year it's two and next year it's 10, you know?
Yes, depending on the district. Interests.
That's because, why?
Well, it's because-
Did it get wet or?
Well, a lot of people complained. The first year it was, we are not the first district to participate in MKIA. It's been rolled out over two or three year period of time and different districts were chosen to participate in certain years. So the first year they had a group of cohort one, they were assessed in all 10 areas. And the feedback was, it was way too much to learn the program. You know, all of the data has to be put into a program, they have to collect evidence on all of these things, upload it, submit the information to Department of Education. And for kindergarten teachers, you can imagine, those first two months of school are just trying to get them to, you know, get used to the routine of school.
Sit down. Get off the bus.
Get off the bus. Right school.
So they're going to get the process down and then do a couple of standards and then next year-
Exactly. So this year we did two standards, next year we do 10.
That's a big jump though.
It's a big jump, yeah.
Yeah, that doesn't sound, that's not that easy to me, but that's better than-
No. One of the things we're able to do is at least now we know what the standards are. We've had the training, we have our manuals, so now we'll meet this spring to start to really think about, what are we looking for in the other eight standards and how can we measure that in a way that helps us to manage our time that's reasonable.
Are these assessments done at the beginning of the year, Jim? Are they done at the end?
No, they're done twice. They have to be uploaded to the Department of Ed by November 5th.
Okay.
So fairly close, beginning of the school year, and then again in June.
So what's it doing, an assessment on that?
Yeah, there are 10 different standards, the social skills, math, arts.
Okay, so they're trying to understand where the children are when they're coming into kindergarten, is that what they're trying to understand?
Correct.
So it's really looking at, are they concerned about preschool? Under the rule?
Yes. And some preschools do use this assessment as well.
Okay.
I think long term, I think it's going to be a measure, it's either going to go away or it's going to be a measure that expands over the early childhood school years.
Yeah.
Because right now it doesn't really measure, I mean, it measures a small amount of growth in kindergarten, but then, we don't use it in first grade, so it doesn't feed a lot of, unlike MCAS that we see measure over a long period of time and can really, you know, follow student growth and performance. So that's why I say I think, in the long run, I think it will, it will expand.
Just to be a broken record, I bet this is on our list of what we've added to the unfunded mandate.
Unfunded mandate.
Unfunded mandate. So, good idea and concept, but we didn't take anything off all those kindergarten teachers' plates to add some.
No, in fact, we added, you know, new standards-
Right.
-that really require kindergarten students to perform at a much higher level than we ever did. In the area of safe and healthy learning environment, we did additional training this year with our students and also with our parents. As you know, we use the ALICE approach, especially in the case of intruders, and the training was really well received by parents. I think we were, we all knew it was a great approach to keeping our kids safe, but we wanted to make sure we were able to communicate that in a way that parents felt that it was a safe way to keep their kids in school in case something were to happen. And I really want to commend Mr. Ryan, the Assistant Principal for Finn and Woodward School, who did a phenomenal job working with a few other folks in the district to make this very kid-friendly. You know, what you, how you implement this at a high school level is very different than how you implement with a five, six, seven, or eight-year-old. So they did a really good job in presenting that at this level. We did not get any negative feedback. Parents who were nervous or anxious came to a principal's coffee that we hosted. It was pretty well attended and they were very positive with the feedback that we received. Also, in addition to the two schools, we added a buddy bench. I think we talked a little bit about that last year when we presented our goals. It's part of our anti-bullying program to support children so that they have a place to go at recess in particular, so that staff and other students can see that they need some support. And in the area of the 21st century learning in our plan, we have updated our Woodward lab this past year to become an iPad lab. And so that has been very successful and we hope to do the same at Finn over the next few years. Another piece of the 21st century learners is really making sure that our teachers are well-trained to manage the technology and the skills that we have to teach to our students. So the staff of both schools have committed to a two-year goal in, to increase technology skills, including their principal. So one of the things that we had is a workshop this fall on one of our professional development days, really talking about all the applications that are in Google Drive and how we can really use that as a great opportunity to share our workload and collaborate. And so, you know, Mrs. Johnson talked a little bit about, you know, the importance of bringing to everybody's technology skill up to a certain level. We all have, you know, different experiences with technology and this is really one great way to do this, to bring everybody on board, the same goal, the same training, and it just has, it's worked really well so far this year. And then finally, under the community awareness and homeschool connections, we continue to offer principals' coffees two or three times a year and we continue to communicate with parents in a whole variety of ways, through one called Chalk Talk. And we added a SAFE program this year, which is Student Awareness of Fire Education to our third grade curriculum. Students get some training in the lower grades, in kindergarten, first grade, but then we didn't have anything else. And the fire department actually approached us and said, you know, we'd be happy to bring this program to your school. So they come once a month, they meet with our third grade students, and they talk a lot about a whole variety of things, holidays, holiday safety, ICE safety, how to call 911, what to do in case of a fire. So that's been a great addition to our enrichment program at Woodward. So that's a general update of some of the things that we've been working on at the two schools.
One question, Jim?
Yeah.
Just, I know you went over it a little bit, but just a quick overview of the Envision Math Program?
Sure. Envisions is a math program that we adopted last year and it's, closely aligns itself to the Common Core standards and the new standards that have been released. It's language-heavy, it's a different approach, but it, I think it's going to match very nicely with PAR, you know, things that are being expected. The setup of the program is very nice. It has, you know, directed teaching from the teacher, then it has guided practice, which is kind of small group support, and then independent practice. So the way they kind of release the expectation of student skills is very effective. The video component is very interesting. When I first saw it, I wasn't sure if I liked it or not, but at the beginning of every lesson, every teacher has this video component that's put out by the company. And I actually love it because I think it puts everybody on the same playing field in regards to the information they're receiving about how to teach and how to learn this particular math concept. I think particularly at the elementary level, our teachers are very well-trained in literacy skills and how to teach reading and writing. And math is not an area that I think, that a lot of teachers had a lot of coursework on. So they're good at teaching math, but they haven't had the same, I think, level of professional development. So this approach, this video clip, it's short. It doesn't do the whole math lesson, but it's just a short little video clip. Really does a nice job of bringing everybody together and that's what's available for parents.
The teachers would watch that, they wouldn't show that to the class, that's more for their information before.
No, it's for the kids.
Oh, it's animated.
No, it's animated, it's very kid-friendly. It's sometimes 30 seconds long, you know, one minute. It's not a long version, but it really, it animates it in a way that is very well-received, I guess, by the kids, you know, they really understand it.
Anything else?
Yeah, question. The principals' coffee, how well-attended are they? How many people do you usually get?
It depends. Some years, a lot, some years not so much. The first one, involuntary volunteering at the beginning of the school year, we kind of go over our school goals and usually very well-attended. ALICE was very well-attended, because she wrote that, but that was very well-attended. And that was K to five. We expanded that, K to five. And then the one that we've had on doing the social curriculum, I think it depends on the topic, also, has been canceled three times. Wait, do we schedule that? But I would say, minimum 20. In other years it's been long.
What was the maximum?
Oh, 80, 90?
Okay.
Yeah, there have been years where we put out 80 chairs, we have to get more chairs.
Great.
You're still getting volunteers in the school? Is there?
We do.
With parent volunteers?
Yeah.
I just wanted to follow up on Jim's presentation. Not often do we hear about all of the things our teachers are doing. And Jim's presentation tonight really touched upon a lot of innovative practices, that they're in the second year or the first year, or just in initial phases of implementing. Some by our choices in district because they align very nicely with our strategic plan. As you listen to Jim's presentation, I was saying, okay, that's communication, that's a technology focus area, that's a curriculum focus area, and certainly student support services goes so far-reaching for all of our student population. But it's not often that we hear all of what the teachers are engaged in in the course of the day. Here we have a new writing program that's in place, we have a new math program in its second year, and all of those teachers really participated in some very in-depth professional development around the mathematical practices that are embedded in the Envision program, because it's just a resource, the teachers are the teachers. And so when you think about MKIA as starting out as a new initiative, which may be the precursor to an MCAS or a PAR or some state assessment yet to be known, all of these new things are happening and in addition to that, adding to the school culture and the climate with things like the buddy bench and the ALICE program and those kinds of things. So something new is really happening each and every day in our district and in our schools. And I think this is a really good indication that while we may not be sharing this on a regular basis, teachers are really engaged and continually enriching the experience for students and enriching their own practice. So I think this is a great snapshot of all that's being undertaken by our teachers and you as an administrator and the great things that our kids are experiencing.
And I just want to say something to you that the Woodward and the Finn are just excellent schools, just outstanding, and this just goes to show that you're right on top of it all the time. And I'd just like to read this stuff, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, along the same lines, I'm intrigued by this tool, CC Pencil, that I say?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is that, is it allowed teachers to share their best practices with each other? Is that the idea?
Well, that's the online data collection tool that's being piloted in the second grade. So it allows, yes, it allows teachers to share, let's say with the reading specialist who worked with a group of children in their classroom. And one of the things it does is it keeps track of all of the teacher's notes and any of their data that they put in it. So it can help her to also regroup and group kids by skill. So students, we have three, four students have a particular skill that they're struggling on, she knows she can pull those four. So it's just a, really a data collection tool that helps them to kind of gather information together.
How is it different than Atlas?
Atlas is for curriculum mapping, so that's where the teachers put their goals and objectives and their plan for how, this is what I'm going to teach. And that's different because that's where you put student information, student data on their progress.
Okay, so no student data goes into Atlas?
No. So Atlas is curriculum, the data collection is assessment, curriculum assessment.
Anything else?
Instruction, that goes with curriculum piece in Atlas.
Is there a tool then for sharing best practices? I thought that was part of Atlas.
It is part of Atlas.
Oh, yeah.
It's the curriculum side.
It's curriculum.
And you can share assessments in that as well. But this also may launch and connect into the district determined measure piece where you're really sharing assessment data as well. So it's almost simultaneous, but in separate pockets.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else? Thank you. Jim?
Yeah.
Brings us to Director of Student Support Services search update.
Unfortunately, unfortunately for us, but I think there's always a smile on Barbara's face. Mrs. Goodman, after 16 years of serving as an administrator in some capacity, whether it's as the Assistant Director of Student Support Services or the Director of Student Support Services, has announced her retirement effective August 1st. I think we all, I know we all celebrate all that you have done for our students over these many years and thank you for your dedication and your service to our school community. And you're going to be very difficult to replace, for so many reasons, but replaced we must. And we do have a screening committee forming, I think in your packet there's actually a copy of the letter that went out to our parent guardian and our general community looking for participation. It's going to be quite an extensive search committee, as is the case when it's a district central office position. So we will be looking for a number of different categories of individuals, parents, parent advisory council members, non-instructional members of student support services, instructional staff members, school committee member, and a school building administrator from each of the three districts, as well as central office support as well. So it will be a lot of coffee at that meeting, ready to go. And we've already released a schedule of our interviews and it will be masterfully guided by Greg Martino, who is quickly becoming our search committee candidate, I think, here at this point, and master ceremonies. So if we are very fortunate to find someone to replace Barbara, again, I'm not sure how that's going to happen, there may be a possibility that we can bring the candidate to the combined meeting in March, because this is a school committee appointment. So I'll be making a recommendation to the committee and the committee will be interviewing the findings. I think Barbara, you might want to say a few words?
I do.
Somehow I knew that.
So I did want to take the opportunity just to state that it really has been an honor and a privilege to serve the families and the children in Southborough and in Northborough. I feel exceedingly proud, as I anticipate retirement, of the excellent programs and services that are implemented every day in our district by very talented, highly skilled, dedicated practitioners. And the work that's been achieved is really the result of collaboration that starts with our building principals, our special educators, our teachers, certainly our parents, and with your support. And I want to thank you for that because we've accomplished what we have with the support of the school committee. When I started my career, the concept of inclusive programming, this I'm going to date myself, didn't exist. And it's extraordinarily gratifying to work with our colleagues to foster a culture which is very well-established now, that we embrace all of our students' differences regardless of how unique and challenging they may appear. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank you and to assure you that we have a very healthy and robust program that we'll be able to move forward. Thanks.
From all of us, I mean, three years is a long time. We've done a lot of good work.
Went by very quickly.
Yes, thank you. You know, the, you know, one thing about retiring from something like your position is you can certainly look back and look at the true impact you've had on many parents, many children, families, et cetera. So you'll have a lot to look back on and so we do- So you'll have a lot to look back on, and so we do appreciate all these years, all you've done for, as you said, the children of the district. So, thank you, thank you. And congratulations.
But you're here till August 1st, right?
Right. Oh, yes.
We're not pushing you out the door, so you just.
We've got to say thank you for a long time.
So do we need to appoint a member for the search committee? Any volunteers?
I volunteer, but I do volunteer. But, yeah, so I've had a death in the family in Arizona. And I know. And so, and there's going to be, unfortunately, the service isn't for three to four weeks, and I don't know when. So I cannot commit 100% to the dates. So I don't know what Plan B would be.
An alternate? An alternate?
And it happens, you know, I heard about it. It's a new conversation. An alternate?
Okay. Because I'd hate to say I can't do it, because I might, but I...
But you know it won't be, so you would be able to do the...
Yeah, certainly, because I'm not going to...
Right.
Week, four weeks, but...
Right.
All right. Well, Kathy, Mary Beth is...
Maybe alternate? Yeah, okay. Great.
That's for me.
Thank you.
So on to old business, we have the cable studio update.
We are, I'm pleased to report that the Southborough Access Media Studio Group continues to seek new housing in Southborough. They will be visiting our schools once again to determine whether we can collaborate on their relocation. We do have, we've had a number of conversations with them to just explore the possibilities. And as they move closer to making a decision, they too are out looking at sites and revisiting sites to determine what exactly it would take to move from point A to point B. We're hopeful that we'll be hearing something soon by the end of February. I know that next week they plan to go out and visit two sites again. They are still looking to find a new home within the next month or so so that they can use the summer to move into their new facility, wherever that might be. We continue to be very engaged in the conversation and hope that they will be in a position to make a decision shortly. And we'll certainly be able to share more information as it becomes known to us. It's a great opportunity for our students and a wonderful opportunity for us to collaborate on this exciting opportunity to bring programming and technology and the media into our schools on a more formal basis. As I've mentioned before, we have a very successful history with that kind of affiliation. We've had a wonderful relationship with the Northborough Cable Access moving into our facility, most like a hundred years ago, I think it was about thirty, twenty years ago, into one of our, into the regional school. And it's worked out very well for the teachers because the technology is readily accessible to them to do some wonderful things in the classroom, to enrich their curriculum, to do some actual elective programming. And it's been a wonderful opportunity for the community because they're so used to coming into our schools. And, you know, that relationship will just continue to build. So we have a good history of making it work for everyone.
Kindergarten study group update?
Earlier this year, we had mentioned that there was a group of parents that were very interested in exploring what the options might be for kindergarten and moving forward. I think certainly some of that energy and that enthusiasm might be, in part, as you heard this evening, there's a new assessment for the kindergarten level and MKEA, IKEA, there's some, isn't there a car or something? IKEA, no, IKEA. And so I think part of their interest is also in really getting to know what our curriculum is all about for the kindergarten students, and also to have some engaging conversations about what the change in the curriculum might be, given the change in standards, given this new assessment model and so forth. Part of the conversation obviously will be to explore the feasibility as to whether or not we can move from a half to an all full day free model. But that's again, part of the meeting and part of the purpose of a study group. They've been wonderful to meet with. Jim, Greg has joined me in a few of the meetings. We've probably met three or four times. Very involved, parents whose children may in fact be part of the system or just entering the system. And so far, the feedback has been great. Pretty much been their first opportunity to participate at a school level in any way, and they've been quite excited to do so and happy with the time that we've spent exploring options. So I would like to suggest that we formalize this and move it to an official study group with a member from the school committee. We've chatted back and forth and realized that this is a very busy time for all of us with budget season and so forth. And so we're thinking that the late April, early May timeframe would give us an opportunity to do some great work over the summer. And if and when something came out of that study group that would impact, let's say, a budgetary issue next year, or a curriculum issue, or an assessment issue, we'd be well prepared for those conversations at the beginning of the school year, not in the mid-cycle or at the end of the school year. So it's sort of a proactive conversation. And, you know, not that we have to decide this evening, but certainly we'd be looking for some representation from the school committee as a liaison, and then deciding on what the composition of the committee might actually look like. So I think it's a great opportunity for, it's been a little while since we've had a conversation about kindergarten, so it's time to refresh the topic, especially with all the changes that we're hearing about at the state level.
I think it's nice to get the younger parents who are enthusiastic and want to get involved.
So how do we want to handle that, then? In terms of volunteer?
If there's someone ready to sign up tonight?
Well, I think we need to have an idea of what the schedule would be like, that these could be daytime, so I don't think we're quite ready for that, right?
We, I think the composition of the committee will determine when the meeting schedule would be. I think it will accommodate most of the members, whatever that might be. We had a conference call the other day for an hour, which was fantastic. We had four people Skyping on the call because we couldn't all come together. So we're embracing technology as part of this, you know, move. And it worked out very well. So I think it might be a combination of both, including conference call. But again, we don't have to decide tonight, it's just something to think about. Search committees, study groups, opportunities, all of that. Okay. I think Roger's going to be the volunteer.
Well, do you know how many meetings, I guess you don't really know the schedule, but do you know how many times this group meets? Is there any idea of that even? Or is this all going to be determined by the committee itself?
I think it'll be determined by the committee itself, Roger, and how deep we go into the topic and discussions. But we do know that it's very outcome-based, and so what we do want to do is assign people with a certain charge. A lot of it will be doing some research and bringing it back. So we don't really want to make, you know, this a prolonged experience because things, people become very disinterested. So we'd like to, you know, start investigating the topic from a variety of aspects. I would think we probably could meet six to eight times and pretty much be ready to move forward. We've met three times, and mostly it's just because we've been joining the conversation. We could go right down to the heart of the matter and get down to some of the analysis that we want to participate in. We've already done, based on some preliminary conversations, doing an analysis of in-staffing and things like that from the school side, so that would be moving along.
All right. I'd like to think about that.
I'm happy to help. Yeah, exactly.
That brings us to the superintendent's report to the committee. First item of this year's budget.
We do. We're quite fifteen budget, we're in your packet with no significant variances.
I'm going to need to make them to accept.
Second.
And discussion.
Yeah, I have a question. Where, what line item would all this snow removal be in?
We're going to see outside with buckets.
I know, pretty soon it's going to be like teachers.
No, that's a good question because Dave White has done some incredible work and a pretty tight timeline. When it's our own staff that's doing it, it's overtime. We have an overtime salary.
Okay.
But he actually, facility, yeah, it's all coming out of it. But he actually did, in order to get the sidewalk clear between Neri and Trotter, he did. We did have to have an outside contractor come in. You know, it's just, everybody's spread thin.
But then the town's only...
The other sidewalk.
Yeah, the sidewalk, plow.
We do have a small machine that we generally do use to help with the sidewalks, but the best snow was a little bit too petty for that.
I think we all understand it.
We did have to get an outside contractor, so that went into our facility's budget. But...
No, I mean, this snow removal is going to be felt at all levels, the lowest level of it all.
The town budget would be the one that was most significantly.
Well, they certainly have a greater area.
Then that, just for my information, the roads coming through the school, are we responsible or does the town do it?
The town does.
The town does.
To the sidewalks and around the perimeter of the buildings.
What about the lots? Is that the town?
The lots.
Okay, so really the biggest hit is on the town?
No, absolutely the biggest hit is on the town.
And they're absorbing some of our snow removal. Right. So it's, we're a town?
That's right. The extra that we needed to do, we're going to be, you know, take it out of our, find a way to do it out of our facilities.
But most of our snow removal is the town.
Absolutely.
So when we saw the backos out there moving, that was the town? Oh, was that the...
Last night?
Yeah, last night.
That was the outside contractor.
That was the outside contractor, yeah. That was a lot of snow he was moving. Oh, my God. So...
And the roof work, we did have some snow taken off, ice taken off the roof. It's a precaution that we do do that.
One question I'd like to do, there are really big icicles hanging on Trotter. Have they been removed?
They haven't. Well, when, in locations where there was an egress, yes. But in other locations, not yet. We're actually consulting with a roofing company early next week to...
Yeah, I was asking because they can bring damage, but also they're, I mean, these things are, they're just enormous. Of course, kids can't get there because there's too much snow, but...
I've been doing a tour of the building every day, checking the icicle situation. And just going, where can that go? You know, so we've been good, Dave's been excellent about it, and, you know, there's sometimes it's just unsafe to even approach some of those in different scenarios. So we've been selective, we've had to block off some places during some time.
And that probably would work, just blocking, well, the kids can't get there anyways, there's way too much snow.
No, for the most part. But we just want to make sure that every possible egress of the building is safely accessible. And that's been the focus of it. So like the courtyard, we didn't worry about it. There's thirty feet of snow in the courtyard and fifteen feet, you know, icicles coming down, but we're not worried about that because no one goes in the courtyard. So it's more of the perimeter of the building, the outside, and student safety and staff safety is what we're concerned about. But we do have...
How was the roof?
How was the roof?
Not bad.
Just have to say.
After the blizzard, we did have a crew come in and remove a lot of snow from the roof, and I think the plan is to have another crew come in on Monday. But roofing crews have been tough to find. So Dave's had to do some researching, and I believe they're coming in on Monday to take a peek at all the things and make sure that we're in good shape. So it's being monitored daily.
Well, that's good, that's good to stand on top of that, because you sound like you're really on top.
Oh, yeah, every day. Every day I'm doing a tour of the building. We're not doing that again.
I was just going to say, you remember, it came in a few years.
We're not having the roof day.
A roof day. Right, the roof day. How are the other schools? Are they...
It's the same situation.
Yeah, because Neri's flat. And we seem to be in a phase of repairing the roof at Neri every year or so, but we're so far so good?
So far so good. Like Keith said, Dave's doing a really good job, making sure he's on top of things. We walk around the building every day as well, and it's still pretty white up there. Hoping for some warmer weather.
So Neri's is flat, of course, which is, have they, has it been shoveled at all? I guess it's probably seen years like this, right? Sort of, but I don't necessarily know if I've seen many years like this.
This is, that's a record. But so far so good.
All right. I think we're ready for a vote on the budget. All in favor? Dan?
I forgot we had a motion. Budget priorities, no change. I would like to mention though, because one of our, one of our budget priorities is, you know, maintaining capital assets, and just really give a nod to the Department of Public Works in Southborough. I've called Karen Galvin more times than she's probably ever heard my voice in six months or three years over the last two weeks, and she has been, as well as her crews, incredibly responsible and responsive and very much concerned about the lots at the school. We've gone back a couple of times, we're good to go, we're not good to go, and she's on top of it. And they have spent hours and hours and hours, I imagine, in their vehicles plowing snow. Yesterday morning, when we came in, one of the DPW drivers was in our lot, and I asked him, you know, how are you holding up? He said, well, I'm hoping I'm going to get two hours sleep and another six. So, you know, they're out there and they're just, they've just done an amazing job. It has been unprecedented snowfall, and I do also want to thank the parents and community members for their understanding that it is sort of a unique situation. And the feedback that we have received has been incredibly positive. The building principals are on top of it, Cheryl, Dave White. We've been meeting on a regular basis, really just to talk about what the conditions are. So it's really been a great collaboration and a team effort because these are interesting times.
Have we had a lot of bus issues, like delays and things like that because of, because my neighborhood was horrible. I was driving going, how did a bus get through here?
We've had delays, but I think that the bus company has, over time, been responsive to our concerns. And I also think it depended on which particular day and which particular scenario was out there. You know, one day we had a little ice, the next day we had a little snow. We have a lot of back roads. One of the difficulties that we find is that while our main roads may be just fine, they're down to, you know, pavement, they look clear, most of our roads are back roads and they're very narrow, and we're very concerned about the safety of our children. Those snowbanks are high. And, you know, the buses have also a challenging situation to get through the roads. I think what's most important for us is for them to let us know when they're going to be late, and we're certainly have been working with that so teachers can, you know, administrators can get out of one call to parents. So I think that's improved over time, and I think we're at a good place right now. Should another storm happen, I think we're going to be fine all the way through. It's taken a lot back.
You know, we didn't miss today's storm though, right? So maybe our luck has changed.
No, I heard another foot on Saturday.
Yeah.
Saturday into Sunday.
Saturday into Sunday.
Oh, really? But next week is vacation, I guess.
I have about twenty-seven weather forecast apps now. So what I'm trying to do is actually just go for the average of all of these. Some provided by our students, some provided by other superintendents, some provided by non-community members, and so there's no shortage of the next three absolute perfect forecasts.
Well, you know, at this point though, you'd say, oh, just a foot on Saturday.
Just a foot.
Just a foot, ah, it's nothing.
Right. I mean, what maybe is worth bringing up is the whole, we've, snow days, we've had five. So we, probably will talk about this at the joint, but, you know, I think somebody had said, oh, we've used up all our snow days, and we don't really have an allotment of snow days. We have a last day of school, and we add on every snow day, and the only thing that's gets in the way of that is we have to be done by June 30th. It's contractually with all the teachers, state budgets, our fiscal year, all fiscal year. But just, we've reached five snow days, and so if you look at the calendar, we're now at June 23rd, which I actually think maybe getting that up to parents, you know, right now and say, hey, I hope everyone's aware of that, if you're planning vacations and stuff, you know, the minimum day we're getting out at this point is June 23rd and start. But we'll keep adding on. If we get more snow days, we'll just keep adding on to that last day of school. And so as long as everybody is kind of aware of that.
I mean, the reality is that the five days is probably somewhere in our history of education. It's sort of an arbitrary number of days, which probably had origins somewhere along the way, based on something, but it's almost like the nine-hundred-and-ninety hours of instruction that, you know, high school, how they pick nine-hundred-and-ninety, I'm not sure anyone ever knows, or nine-hundred for middle school. But the actual practice is we go until, school is in session until June 30th, or until such time as we reach one-hundred-and-eighty school days. And, you know, that was brought up throughout this whole process, and I think the governor addressed it very succinctly as well. So for us, that 23rd is a Tuesday, which I think is a half a day for students. So conceivably... And, you know, that was brought up throughout this whole process, and I think the governor addressed it very succinctly as well. So for us, that 23rd is a Tuesday, which I think is a half a day for students. So conceivably, we have five more school days before we hit June 30th, and that's really, that's really the magic date. And I think the five days has provided sort of an opportunity for folks to think about camps or scheduling or so forth, but we have until June 30th to go to school. And there is no discussion at this point, although if we get significant snowfall that sort of goes up until March or into March, about any waiver, and that's another thought that a lot of folks have, will just apply for a waiver from the department, that they're not so inclined to give waivers. And, you know, we're very fortunate, we start before Labor Day, so our count starts in, earlier in August, and I think when we come to these kinds of snow experiences in New England or weather conditions, we really see the, and appreciate the value of that, because we would be almost past our June 30th, 30th day.
So, not that it's at all likely that it would happen, but since we wouldn't sacrifice safety if we had snow, we would cancel school. If our count got to the point where we projected we don't have enough to finish by June 30th, where would we take it from, April vacation?
April vacation.
Probably, I mean, is that, I'm not saying there's a decision on that, is that likely where people turn?
In all likelihood, that would probably be where folks would take a look at. And what has happened, when the, when the Commissioner of Education has granted a waiver, those decisions tend to be made around the April time period, because at that point, you get a better indication of how many schools have gone over there a lot, and is there a critical mass to grant a waiver? You know, I know a lot of teachers are already concerned about the amount of preparation time that's been lost for MCAS and things like that, and AP classes, and that's, you know, that's a concern. But we still have time to look at, you know, flipping classrooms and doing some other innovative teaching practices. It's, it's too recent to be even thinking about February vacation, that's next week. And in between February and April, we have no professional development days that we could, you know, modify, and very few other days out of session. So that would probably be where we need to look. But we still have five days, and thankfully, the end of February is coming up. I remember 100 years ago going to school on Saturday, which, you know, we've had to do that in years past in extreme situations. But, you know, we've got some time, and we're definitely not in a.
We're not, I usually bring it up so people don't think, like, we've used, it's not that we only have five snow days, we have an end date, and we just keep adding on the snow days till we get to June 30th.
And it may be a little disruptive at this point with things that have been scheduled, but, you know, that's really what we have to do is work on the calendar. Excellent.
All right, we're on budget calendar, which.
We do have a slight change. We did receive a call from the town office, from Mark Purple's office, and the, the February 24th original date for us to meet with South Grove Advisory Committee has been changed. It is now March 10th. Which, looking forward to that. And March 10th is actually after our next public hearing.
Yes, it is.
So we will have one more public hearing tomorrow.
Oh, but not our public hearing, because we have, we have the meeting before.
Got you.
What about the, the meetings with the public? Are they going to be?
I am, and I've scheduled one, I think Kathleen has booked me in for the senior center in March. I've reached out to the PTO presidents and suggested that I am completely available to attend any meetings that they would like. I'd love to be able to come and meet with their members and review the budget with them. And we're going to schedule a day coffee at Woodward, like we've done last year. And I actually might broaden that to include a day at each of the schools, so that parents in that area could come if they'd like. Do four.
I was just going to say, because.
I mean, I combined two schools for one.
So few people come.
I think we got two at each last year.
We did.
Yeah, that's what I'm always, I mean, probably was almost thinking maybe to do one.
One morning.
One, you know, make it, I was actually thinking one evening, but.
But we got better, we've gotten better attendance at the morning.
Yeah, you know something, I'm sure you're right, because we got almost, we had almost no attendance. So.
Meet the Voice on the Snowparks.
I have to say, the last one, you were like, I almost wanted to say me again.
Well, I will say, I was at the high school today, and we had a meeting, and I walked up to a group of about 12 students, and I said, okay, who do you think I am? Good evening, this is Christine John. They recognized me.
I still, Charles, last year, when he was reading to the kindergartners, and they asked, true, you know what my job is, and they keep calling me. It's your whole job. Is that your whole job now?
Of late, not a part of it, I wouldn't say the whole, but definitely a part of it.
All right, so that brings us to the fiscal '16 budget.
So you have a line item budget in the PowerPoint which I'll distribute, so that you have a copy of that as well. Whatever you want.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, it's a little dark right now. Trying to get this in the best light.
No, no front end?
No front end. So thank you, this evening we'll be presenting the recommended budget. Last month, at the January 14th, we actually presented our preliminary budget, the first budget that's presented in the FY '16 budget season. But before I begin, I do want to thank a few, several people actually, certainly the community that's been very supportive of our budgets each and every year, and also the collaboration that we enjoy with all of the folks at the Town Hall, particularly Mark Purple and his financial team, because this is a collaborative effort. We believe that our responsibility is to present an educationally sound budget, and to do that in a fiscally responsible manner, and that really involves feedback from the town, and to really get some indication of where we are in this collaborative process. So the budget this evening is, in fact, the recommended budget, and as we discussed last month, we always start with our vision, because that helps guide us through the budgetary process. It helps ground us and form a framework for our conversations when we need to make difficult decisions, or very exciting decisions about innovative programming, or changes to the budget from year to year. So this is the vision of the South Grove Public Schools, it's very much embedded in the strategic plan, and it's very much a part of what we do each and every day in our schools. And there's a couple of words that stand out. One is opportunities, because that's certainly what we want to provide all of our students, and we look for opportunities to bring in innovative practice, and to engage all of our students in a supportive unit, and communicate this information to the public, to our school community, and certainly provide the best we can together, the best educational experience for every student in our schools. We also have budget priorities, we just reviewed them again this evening. We begun, began the process of developing these priorities, as we do each and every year, at the very first meeting of our school committee, because these also help to strengthen our budgetary processes we move through, and they're very much tied to the vision. In this case, the budgets, the priorities that we have this year are to fund the high priority items as identified in our strategic plan. We heard a wonderful school improvement plan this evening update from Jim Randall, Principal Randall, and that is an improvement plan, a school improvement plan, that is tied to the strategic plan, and the four areas that are of focus are technology, communication, student support services, and curriculum, all of which are reflected in our budget and our discussions each year. Another priority is to continue to provide excellent education, also part of our vision, by placing a high priority on adequate staffing, and to maintain our class size teacher ratios consistent with policy I-240, and also to seek and hire the best qualified candidates to work with our students each and every day. Ensure adequate, consistent, and reliable funding to position our schools to be ready to adopt and integrate 21st century skills into our teaching and learning expectations. Again, we spoke about all the kinds of things that we're doing at the Finn and Woodward School, and that can be carried through into our Niri and to Trotter as well. To maintain the school facilities, to protect the capital investment in the building and building systems. Budget process again begins in September. To move through the process, we meet on numerous occasions, together here at school committee, but also with our town administration and boards, and with our school committee budget subcommittee, that meets quite regularly, in fact, we just met last night. And we move through this process by having our building administrators submit what they feel are their needs for the upcoming fiscal year, based on current budget, and to also develop those needs based on current mandates, current initiatives, and maybe a little futuristic planning in terms of, as Jim mentioned again, the science standards that we're looking forward to embracing very shortly. We continue to meet with the financial team to target any potential identified increases in our budget. To meet with our capital planning subcommittee, as we've already done in South Grove, we approved the capital planning, capital plan, as part of the capital planning subcommittee. And then that brings us to January, where we begin to make some very difficult decisions about what our budget will be for the FY 2016 or the next fiscal year. In this case, last month, we presented a preliminary budget, which in fact was just preliminary. There's a lot of information that we still were seeking at that point. Obviously, we're still waiting for the governor's number for state aid, but we also were waiting for numbers at that point in time in terms of what our staffing might look like. Teachers have until February 1st to identify whether they will be returning, or there's a variety of situations where they may be altering their status from year to year, and certainly with staffing, 85% of our budget, that information is very important to us as we move forward to create a recommended budget. Our appropriated budget in FY '15 was $18,270,604. Our preliminary budget requested a 4.54% increase, for a preliminary budget of $19,099,769. We identified some drivers, this isn't the entire budget, but we identified some budgetary impacts that were going to potentially cause a significant increase in our budget over FY 2015, and these are very preliminary. So we sort of categorized them at our preliminary budget presentation into what you see on the right. We also then identified some offsets that we were going to have, some known reductions in the budget, because we, we had some economies of scales, we had changes in student population, we may have had some changes in staffing that was known at the time that we created the preliminary budget. Since last month, we've had an opportunity to really dig deeper into the budget, and to take that new information that we've acquired in a month, and really finalize some of those numbers. So as we look at budgetary impacts that are affecting the recommended budget for FY '16, we look at contractual increases. FY '16 will be the second year of our negotiated contract, and so that represents, for all staff today, that we have today, with any contractual increases, $213,333. We are in fact, however, recommending staff for next year. We have been addressing the need for a 1.0 or a 1 FTE, a full-time person in each of our buildings, to address the increased needs of our English language learners. Over four years, we have realized a 20% increase in that population, and we also know that we represent in South Grove schools 21 different languages, where students are coming into our schools needing to work and focus on, on learning English. So at this point, the .25 is really an additional amount of time for staff members that we always, already have present in our schools. It's not an additional staff hire, it's a increased number of hours for that staff member. We also know that for English language learners, a lot of the time that is spent with them is actually mandated by not only the state, but the Department of Jobs, and we know that from a lot of, you heard, we've been talking about retail, which is a mandated training for all of our teachers, rethinking equity in teaching language learners. So a lot of what is required in terms of instruction is mandated by set numbers of hours and so forth. So with the increase, we are looking for a .25% increase. The .15 is an interesting number. It's really 30% of an additional half. There's a math envision problem for us, we probably need a little video clip on that one, but last year, we were very fortunate to have all three districts come together to fund half of a central office position. We have identified that this is going to follow the Human Resource Administration area, where now we really have limited staff to deal with all of the, the human resource and personnel issues that are addressed at central office. This is the first hire increase that we will be making as a, as an FTE count since 1999, and the, the hope was that this year we would be able to, in all three districts, fund the other half of that position. So half of an additional member at central office is a 30% contribution from South Grove, equal to $15,000.
So we use as a full-time FTE for that kind of position, and I guess, I guess we're loading that as $100,000?
Student support services. This year, we've heard about our special ed department and the wonderful programs that we have in place for our students, and so to provide, to continue to provide the support and the services that our children need, we're looking at adding a 1.0 speech therapist, and this speech therapist will be someone who provides support for all of our students in our district, and a .4 occupational therapist. That, again, that position is not an increase in FTE full body count, if you will, because the individual would increase their hours. So that's an additional $25,239, for a total of all of our staffing increases, which includes our contractual increases of $324,203. As we move on, we look at some offsets. We do have some adjustments due to enrollments, we'll be taking a look at that very shortly when we look at our FY '15 and FY 2016 enrollments. We are predicting a loss of 2.0 FTE full-time equivalents, equal to $135,171. It's an offset to the budget. And we are also reducing our instructional aid by 6.6 full-time equivalents, for a total of $167,387. So with some of those increases, we've been able to already impact the budget with some reductions of $302,558. When we look at the overall budget, we are looking at some items that may be greater by line item in terms of their budgetary impact. And in this case, we have a change in our textbook instructional materials line item, line increase of $11,977. Much of that is due to the fact that recently we've purchased some new math programs at all of our grades, and with that purchase at the lower grades is a consumable option. So that's increased our instructional materials that we need to purchase each and every year. This year, again, we've heard a number of new writing programs that we're implementing. We've got some work around MKEA, and that comes with some costs as well, so our overall instructional materials cost is, is up by $11,977. And that's overall, that's with the three schools, the four schools submitting their requests for books and materials. We also have an increase in our utilities cost. Those of us who pay our utility bills and our heating and our light bills each and every month, we know that we've probably seen a significant cost in our own utilities. And we also have some contractual obligations that are non-staffing related, that we're in the process of finalizing. And we anticipate both utilities and the increase in contractual obligations will reflect a $46,631 increase. Special education services is really a combination of several factors. One, an increase in the out-of-district placements. One, an increase in the out-of-district placements that we have not only at our collaborative but at private service providers not in our district, necessary to meet the needs of our student population. We did have a decrease reflected in that number in transportation of $18,000 because we did have a student who aged out of the program, if you will. We're required, happily so, to educate our students until the age of 22, and we have a student who's celebrating a birthday, and so that student no longer requires transportation. So that was a reduction included in that amount. I do need to say, point out a couple of things about the special education services increase. Customarily, we receive circuit breaker reimbursement. And in Southborough, the reimbursement last year was approximately $181,000. Because it's almost a good and a bad. Because our expenses did not reach the cap, which is two times the state foundation budget average, and we did not have a lot of situations where we exceeded that number, our reimbursable expenses were down, which means our circuit breaker revolving fund reimbursement grant amount is down. And so that is worth noting because that is a change from this year. So it isn't a direct correlation. We don't get reimbursed, we don't receive reimbursement for all of our special ed expenses, but we do receive some reimbursement for expenses that exceed that state foundation average. What isn't also noted in that number is the amount of, the number of students who actually we are able to keep in district because of the creative and innovative programming and because of the services that we provide. It's very hard to come up with a number to actually reflect how much money is not going out because of the programming that we've been able to offer students and the services that we've been able to offer students. You saw on a previous slide that we're increasing to a 1.0 speech therapist. That's part of that service providing process that allows us to keep students in our district, which we know is always best to be able to educate them in their home school. So while that number is an increase, it probably could be easily offset by the amount of students that we're able to keep in because we have dedicated teachers and quality support services. So again, that's an impact, it's a driver, it's a total of $322,251.
I really did listen because I was very interested in that overall decrease in qualifying expense issue. Would you take me through that one more time?
Sure, and I'm going to rely on Barbara to take me through it.
More traffic, you know. Part of, I don't know if you, but part of that is the whole that we collect circuit breaker this year, this year for what our expenses are this year, but then we use that money next year. And so part of that is that the, our expenses went down this year, but our circuit breaker, the money we put against it to bring, what we do is, the way circuit breaker works is it says that for a child with, what's the terminology?
Well, it's the expenditures.
Expenditures.
That we make per child.
Whether it's in district or out of district are very high. It says that basically in district, we have to pay up to the foundation budget level, which is approximately $40,000.
It's the same in district or out of district.
Or out of district. We are responsible for the first approximately $40,000 of that student. And then anything above and beyond that, the original idea was that the state aid would pay the rest of it, but now that's circuit breaker. So it takes any amount above and beyond $40,000 and reimburses us, now is it 72%?
Wait a minute.
It varies in that part of it.
Clear on that.
So what we do, because that number is kind of a moving target and it's been subject to percentage reimbursement, and it's been subject to those nine C cuts more than once, we as a district are fortunate in that at some point in time, we decided we would collect money this year based on this year's special ed population, put it in the bank, and then use it to offset the following year's budget so we don't get caught mid-year as some districts do when you have nine C cuts. So if I can say, oh, this child's $100,000, we have to pay the first 40, so now I have 60 left, and I'm anticipating the state's going to pay 45 of them. And then mid-year, as they've done several times, they said, no, we're not going to pay 75%, we're only going to reimburse you at 40%. So we're only going to pay $24,000 and then mid-year. So what happened was from, in this fiscal year we're in right now versus last year, last fiscal year, our large amount, special education population went down. So the amount of money we're collecting from the state this year is lower, exactly, than it was last year. But we were applying less, so now we have a lower base of outplaced and a large number of large tickets for their special education classes with that, with last year's reimbursement applied to it. So now we have a lower budget but a larger reimbursement. Next year, our outplacement excessive are going up from what they are this year. So that line item is going up, but the circuit breaker that we're offsetting it with is the lower amount we're collecting this year. So that, so that's, you see what I, so that's where the difference, so then next year, so then even if we stay the same, let's say our special ed for next year's students stays the same as the following year, that will go down because we'll be collecting our circuit breakers. So it's good in that it's fiscally responsible because we don't, we, there was a couple of years ago where they significantly cut circuit breaker mid-year, and there were districts that were just scrambling, and it cost us almost a half a million dollars. But at least we had time to go before advisory and everybody and say, okay, we got through this school year, we didn't need to come to you in the middle of the year and say, oh my gosh, we just lost a half a million dollars mid-year, which we did. But at least we had a budget cycle to go to them and say, next year, we're losing. So does that make sense?
Which is exactly what we're doing now.
You're the director of student support service.
Can you tell how many years I've been doing this?
The phrase decrease in qualifying expenses just raises him in tension now. Now, last question. So maybe I'm, maybe it's not as big a deal as it may be. So the $263,000 in that special education services line is in fact that total amount the result of?
With the loss of the 181.
So that's not?
And it's both.
Cheryl wants to say something too. I'm sure.
That total amount is explained in that asterisk. Can everybody just do it?
Yep.
A difference was approximately $180,000. $180,000 was the difference.
For that, okay.
So if you subtract the 180 out of 263, you'll actually see, because otherwise it would have been paid by the circuit breaker reimbursement. Right. So that would be the actual increase. So we spend last year's money this year, and this year's money earned will be spent next year, which allows us to do some forward thinking with our budget and be in a prepared, proactive state instead of a reactive with the circuit breaker funding, which is basically what that represents. Great question.
Yeah.
It's a confusing situation.
The circuit breaker every year, but it's a great program, but it's, we do it the right way except that these kind of things stop it.
And that's why every time we go to the State House, and we'll probably have the same conversation this year, when they ask what are our priorities, we always say, fund circuit breaker because it really does have a significant impact on our budget. And so I'm sure we'll be saying that again this year as every district does. You know, we asked for 100% over that foundation number, and we're lucky to get 70. I know some years it's gone down to exactly 40, 60%. And it's a moving target. It's also subject to nine C cuts. So we're very fortunate that they did not put that in place this year.
So really, if it was 100%, we wouldn't have to deal with that asterisk.
To that extent.
To that extent.
Well, to that extent.
Right.
No. Or you wouldn't even, that whole line item might not be there because we would only be paying if, we would be paying 40,000.
You know what you're paying. Got your idea. Just one question that I have, just, the way that I understood is that you have, you have a couple of ways that you can elect to collect on circuit breaker. One is you can do it in the current year, or you can move it forward.
You can roll it over for one year.
And so we elected to roll over for one year so we would have the ability to forecast better our expenses.
Thank you.
So that's all it is. So we're not really spending it in a different year, it's just that we've elected to take last year's this year, and this year's gets pushed into next year so that we can in fact explain to people what the difference in the budget is as opposed to maybe going to advisory and asking for money. Now, the last I looked at circuit breaker, I thought it was four times the foundational budget for our students, or two times?
I think it was, was it two or four? I thought it was.
Well, it's four times, the special ed foundation is four times the regular ed foundation. Because your regular ed foundation is about $10,000, your special ed foundation is about 40,000. And it actually, it's a little bit above 40,000.
I get you, okay. And then it's 70 something percent of the amount over and above that.
You are always, we are always, any district in the state is responsible for every child to pay the, to pay the foundation amount. And the initial thought of the circuit breaker is that state aid should cover anything above that, and now it's that, it's that moving percentage. But I will say, the last couple of years, it has been funded pretty steadily in that 70 something, 68 to 70.
But for some reason, legislators seem to think if they get to 75%, that's to pay the funding.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and also, special education for education is not good.
Right, right.
And that can be one, we can have huge swings in that.
Right.
And another huge argument to keep our students in district. Whereas if we're not traveling to communities all over the state, that's not reimbursable by the state. So the more we keep kids in district, that's an expenditure we don't increase. And there are some other expenditures as well, but nothing as significant as transportation.
Oh, transportation just.
Right, right. That brings us to the preliminary budget. With all of those drivers and offsets back in, we had a preliminary budget of 4.54% last month. We again reduced that down to really come in line with the expectations of our community. The appropriated FY 2015 budget was $18,270,604. Our recommended budget is $18,909,000. An overall increase of $638,396, representing a 3.49% budget increase over FY 15. Bottom line. And again, very collaborative process. As you know, obviously, when we start at 4.54, it's difficult decisions to get to 3.49 that we were able to keep in this year, some of the innovative practices that we have in place to support, and we also have some technology increases that we'll be seeing as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You should probably note that the town, in our collaborative discussions, asked if it made it less than 3.5.
We complied. We did.
3.5.
Hold on.
This was actually 4.99, but we just.
Is that what, is that what the town?
3.5. At this point, we still have a month to make any adjustments if we need to. We're not having our public hearing till April, so a vote tonight doesn't mean that we can't make some changes if necessary. If something comes in with respect to chapter 70 that was unanticipated and the town has some additional information that might affect our overall percent increase, so we still have another month to have some conversations, but a vote this evening for the recommended budget would allow us to move forward.
Is there anything in the public regional meetings, got to the point of a recommended budget or an almost recommended budget yet for Algonquin?
We are actually taking that up this month.
Okay, so we don't?
And that's a very different scenario, which is the assessment and the minimum local contribution numbers that are not yet known, the state aid.
Much more complicated.
Very complicated. And so we're hopeful that that March 4th date by the governor is a little bit expedited and comes in a little bit earlier in the month so that we can make some more fine-tuned budget decisions.
Just asking to think about, you know, sort of what the education budget, you know, where the town is going to be when it takes that, so we're not really to the point where we can.
No, not at this point. Hopefully it gets clearer, but.
Regions so different because the budget at the high school can go up by a certain percentage, and it can vary so differently between the two towns. Any ideas from, as far as percentages, is it staying steady, Southborough-Northborough split, because that's an emphasis?
Well, there's a little shift in enrollments, a lot of play into.
Right, 12%.
Yeah. Our conversations with the town is that they do realize that the high school is a little bit different animal, a little bit more wiggle room, I think, at the high school than there is at that place. Because it's so complicated.
It's so complicated. Neither administrators project any increase in state aid, so we're going in with that assumption that state aid will be hopefully levelled. And then it's the minimum contribution numbers that we're waiting to see. And we do know that there'll be some targets for the amount of the overall assessment. We continue to have meetings. In fact, tomorrow, we're meeting with one, and we'll be meeting with the other shortly thereafter. So those are ongoing, but we're hopeful that we will have a recommended budget this month right after graduation.
But we were talking to the town independently.
Yes.
They're looking at us as a overall education budget. They're sort of looking at what we need to do, which is good. Because sometimes we get melded together and that gets, you know, understandably, and I know there have been years where we know that it needed to go that direction more than not.
And we, the conversations have been very separate at this point each time, and it might be, you know.
It might change down the road. It might change down the road, but for now.
It has, so.
Are we ready for motion to accept the recommended budget? Someone?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I think it's a very responsible, responsible budget meeting.
Yeah.
We have to agree.
I was just going to say, they're not, we're not being extravagant. We're reducing, we're adding small things that are required by IEDs and law enforcement.
All in favor? That brings us to enrollments.
The enrollments are in packets. We do have the 2016 enrollments indicated on the enrollment chart as well as kindergarten numbers. Keep this passing my glasses down after doing my jacket, doing my head, doing my jacket, and there they are. He's smiling on the other side. Oh, completely changed the number sense. And we have, we have reflected the adjustments in the 2016 projections, those adjustments being the teacher, projected teachers for class. Again, we moved them forward and have made some slight adjustments to the class sizes, but overall, as you saw in the budget presentation, we have a 1.0 classroom reduction in overall, 2.0 reduction in FTE instructional. And we spent a lot of time looking at these numbers in relationship to our class size policy I took 40, and very pleased to share that we're completely in line with our class size policy at Algonquin. That's just great. Very good news. There's also some updated information from Finn on kindergarten enrollments on the bottom, and it looks like we're trending very close to last year's numbers at this point. There's a couple footnotes. There are 119 kindergarten students, which is inclusive of five that have signed up for half-day. But we also know that there were, that was last year. This year, we have a total of 115 with 10 attending half-day. Has that changed at Algonquin or it's pretty steady? And I think you had indicated there were a number of registrations or packets still out.
There are 10 parents we haven't heard from, and typically, we get anywhere between 10, 15 enrollments.
So we're pretty close. So we're pretty close.
So it's about 25.
Okay, so the 115 and 10 is, because there's, there's two asterisks there, but it doesn't really reference anything. But that, but that's next year's, then the-
Wait, is this, there's no 2,000? No, there's no, I don't know.
Um, I think there's supposed to. Well, the numbers are on the bottom.
We have, we're going 2015, 16.
We don't have a 15, 16 projected on here.
Yeah. Four, four, the head count draws four, but the, but the half-day really draws.
No, but this isn't, this isn't projected.
We're at 115, right?
Or 119.
For kidding, our next year is currently registered.
115.
You currently have 115 registered for next year.
But you've doubled the ones that are going to be half a day, at least in the projection.
Oh, here, we've got a different one.
Let's try, just, you know what, just in. Just in the packet. Here we go. There we go. I knew it would. There's another paper cooking. Let's try these. Thank you.
So actually, I think there's a good chance that next year's possible will be bigger than this year.
Yeah, you already got 115 registered.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Cap, it is the double aster. Total of 126 kindergarten students includes 10 who will be attending half-day and 11 who have not yet registered.
So you already have 115 registered. And 10 that you know that live here but haven't gotten there.
But the most important thing is our kindergarten classes are growing, they are not falling.
They're not falling.
We're actually, just as anecdotally, we're doing an analysis in preparation for our, our study, whenever that forms. And we're comparing the NESDEC projections with the actual five-year past and five-year forward. And also, you know, again, looking at the actual numbers and looking at the NESDEC numbers. And that trend is consistent from the five years we've conducted in the past analysis moving forward. So it seems that that's the case in each of the last five years. And there's no indication that it isn't going to be the case next year as well.
Well, what happened is, it just reversed what happened. And that wasn't the addition from some people that expected this. Instead it-
It's not going to go up like this.
No, it's not, it's moving up, it's gradually moving up. Until it moves up fastly and gradually, but we just don't know. We don't know if that will happen or not. But we know we're watching it.
Close lean.
All right.
Right, because I, if you already have a, have 126 on your radar. I mean, I think we only had about 100 on our radar this time last year and we're up to 120, so, yeah.
All right. Good news.
Educational policy? Someone? Is that right?
None at this time.
Okay. Policy development, uniform distribution.
We do have an item, subcommittee liaisons. We, we actually had, that happened earlier with someone who might have wanted to be on the committee. Kathy wanted to be on the committee and we sort of went to a plan B. And we found that it's not, it's not, it's desirable to have a plan B, otherwise known as an alternate perhaps at some meetings, where everyone's schedules are so varied. Weather conditions sometimes prohibit people from attending a meeting. So we'll have a meeting that's posted in there from time to time. We were not able to conduct a meeting because we don't really have a forum. So we really can't make any decisions and move forward. So about a month ago, two months ago, I had an occasion, I thought we had three meetings where schedules and times and just perfect storm took place and we weren't fortunate enough to have forum, a forum and a couple of meetings. I reached out to council and asked whether or not it was possible to have alternates assigned to committees so that when those situations occur, we can still continue to conduct business. And it's very difficult often times to find a date where we can reschedule, as particularly as the year goes on because everyone's calendar is quite, quite so. So her response was absolutely, as long as the appointments, the alternate appointments are made prior to any posting of a meeting where an alternate might be present. So we continued to have the conversation and one idea that we might want to entertain is actually looking at our subcommittees, our formal subcommittees, and appointing alternates. In which case, as a five-person committee, in most cases, everyone on the committee has served on just about every subcommittee that we've had in one capacity or another. So the great, the great result of that is anyone who joins the subcommittee is very familiar with the process of the subcommittee and the context of the conversations because they've been part of that at one point or another. So it might be a suggestion to appoint alternates to each of our subcommittees. Or in fact, the entire committee can be appointed as an alternate because we do post all of our meetings now. I've found, actually, there's been a tremendous upside to this. We've been scheduling some committees back to back and finding that people are so, you know, members are so engaged in the conversation that they're coming to one and they just want to stay for the next, which is a wonderful opportunity to have some conversations. But it, but the more important thing is it doesn't guarantee us the likelihood, the more likelihood, the greater likelihood of a plot. We're, we're hoping to, you know, have this as a practice, I think, in all three of our, all three school committees.
It would all seem that the simplest way to do it would be to just make the whole school committee an alternate. That just makes sense.
Yeah, I think so.
Especially if you've got three people on most of these committee things.
Right. Well, and also that, that way you can send out an email and say, is anybody, you know, we're, we're doing a policy committee. Is anybody available to attend? I mean, I'm assuming those are the common committees.
Policy capital by subcommittee. And I think we already have that pretty much on the, you know, signing alarms and so forth anyway. So it would be just a continuation. So we just need a vote from the school committee to point the committee members as alternates to subcommittees. And in that case, we would post all of them so that in the likelihood or the unlikely event that everyone shows, which would be wonderful, we've got it already posted.
Fortunately, wish one had.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion along with them?
Well, yeah, I think we could, I mean, would it be a problem to, did you want to make a motion today to make the entire school committee as an alternate? I think that'd be a great idea.
Go for it. Yes, you can.
I'd like to make a motion to have the entire school committee be an alternate on all of our subcommittees.
Second. Any discussion? Okay.
I'll buy an additional permit for two guys. It gives me a full one, a full membership.
All right. We have lots of policy first readings.
We do. Tonight we have the subcommittee, the policy subcommittee has been extremely busy. And we have a number of policies that are here this evening for the first reading. And as we have had in the past, we've taken some of them up for consideration at the meeting. But also at a first reading, since there is always a second reading, we've also provided some opportunities for the committee to take them with, with them home and look at them more closely and submit changes that can be made before the second reading when we bring them back to committee and then take them up for a second read. And certainly with the number of them that we have in the packet, that might be something we want to consider this evening.
A question, just, I think it would really help, just a two-word answer as to why, I, I know we rescind them because it's been usually rolled into another policy. So if someone could just say, like, what G-140 was rolled in, or why, why we're rescinding policy.
Do you want to, we can, we can, I mean, we kind of, we're in there, we're doing a lot of this kind of quickly. I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea, it's a very good idea.
Yeah.
But at the time that we're looking at it, we know at that moment what we want.
Right.
So I think, I think it would be worthwhile to do that.
Yeah, I just think a little, you know, a little notice to what that got rolled into or maybe we don't need it anymore. That's fine, because I know a lot of times we'll call council, it's like, sometimes says, said we shouldn't even have those policies because they're wrong.
So G-140, and I think this also applies to G-200. I'm not sure if anyone else from the policy subcommittee wants to add anything. G-140, G-200, and we'll look for G-160. So at least G-140 and G-200 are matter of practice and are actually, are actual policies. So from time to time, the practice changes, you know, the hiring practice and also how teachers are paid and all of those kinds of things. So they're more of course of doing business than they are actually a policy. And so we, you know, in an effort to reduce the number of policies that, and focus on the ones that are actual policy, this is really practice. And it's been in place since 1959. So we use technology now to process a lot of-
A very good year.
We use the technology for hiring and processing pays.
So, so that's G-140 and G-200.
Teacher separation, G-140.
Right.
Recruitment and selection cafeteria personnel, G-200.
I would think that the reading one is the same thing.
I haven't looked at one since the end.
It's a reading instruction, that looks like matter of practice too.
Right.
Yeah. We would, we should have a policy on the approach to teaching reading and reading.
This is really instructional practice. And that, as we've heard this evening, is already changing from a few years ago. So it's interesting that all three of these policies were revised in 1999, not today, so.
Otherwise, I read everything and I didn't really have any comment to use.
Comment on it.
If anything jumped out at anyone, maybe bring it up now, otherwise take a look at them and pass along any thoughts.
I guess what part of my thinking now is the recommendation to rescind. I guess we could just, I mean, we could actually rescind them because they're not really policies.
We can actually rescind those tonight. We can vote to rescind those.
Because I think they kind of stuck out in our policy meetings.
Yeah, they're weird.
That's something that was just taking up our time.
Exactly. No, I agree.
Should we do a motion?
A motion to rescind? We can rescind all three of them.
I'll make the motion. Motion to rescind G-140 teacher separation, G-200 recruitment and selection of cafeteria personnel, and I-160 reading instruction.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any news?
And if we're taking the first reading home with us this evening, we do have some additional policies that have been approved. And they'll be distributed, they're distributed in your packet. B-270, policy on handling complaints, which is formally known as-
Can you say B?
Function of-
Bigger?
Bigger, yeah.
You can beat yourself.
Formally known as title of function of individual school committee members in handling complaints. This is one of those policies, I bet, that you refer to that we're revising and sort of updating as we go. B-310, orienting new board members also that has been approved. B-20, subcommittees has been approved. And I-150, opening exercises has also been approved. So they're all in your packet for your policy books. Three punch.
Very good. Bring us to personnel items.
The personnel report is in your packet. I have had some resignations and we're in the process of conducting interviews. I believe they bought them both.
Communication? Action on minutes from last month. Question about resignation. So they're all in special ed. Is that, um... Do these people move onto different districts?
They may. I think the, you know, the reasons why they may resign are very many and varied. And I don't think there's any particular reason why they happen to be, you know, they all fall this month, this month personnel. And we have a number of specialized personnel in the district and-
How many do we have?
For today.
Oh, gosh, five.
Friction down.
Ballpark?
In Southboro?
Sure.
She's counting with her hand. Forty, eighty-five.
Okay, I just wanted to kind of-
I don't think there's any experience as to why this is. It's just what, the course of doing business.
Yeah, no, it's, it just fell that way. That's true.
I would say that they're sort of upset that five of them leave you.
All right, action on minutes from last month. If you do a second.
Okay, I'll make the motion. Motion to accept the Southboro School Committee open meeting of Wednesday, January 14th, 2015.
What we mean, minutes?
Minutes. Sorry, I'm tired.
So much shuffling.
Second cabinet. Any discussion?
I'm good.
All in favor? Abstain. Abstentions? Four in favor, one abstention. Those in favor? Agenda items for next month.
Any budget updates?
Budget update?
We may have some, depending on, you know, we went from the town and then meeting with them.
I know, we have, we're not meeting with advisors.
And audience sharing once again. Carrying the weight of the entire audience on shoulders.
No pressure on Dave, everyone looking out.
Take the motion to adjourn. Don't move.
Second.
Okay.